Hello, it is October 23rd, 2019, and this is a Board of Education regular meeting. It's 7:00 PM. Can I have a call to order, please?
Mrs. Etter.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Suchacki.
Here.
Mr. Dobbin.
Here.
Mrs. Schukert.
Here. Five present, zero absent. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The Board values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having an interest in actions of the Board may participate during the public comments section. There's a sign-in sheet over on that orange counter, so if you want to speak, please identify yourself on the Board, or on the sheet, the sign-in sheet. A copy of the Board meeting agenda is available for review on our school district's website, and please silence your phone during the meeting. At this time, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Naaman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dobbin's. Any conversation, or any discussion?
Just one thing to add. I added the addition of the contract with the Village of Chicago Heights for the sign. There's a change that we've made in there because it says where the current sign is located. It's not, it's actually gonna go, the sign will be sent off of this fourth window right here. So, that's, it's the contract with some language change in that, so we'll wait till the language is corrected before we actually sign off it, but I wanted the basic agreement with the Village approved tonight because they want to get, they want to get started on our way.
And I'd like to add, under professional conferences, the Kihauga Valley Chamber of Commerce State of the Valley meeting, which is, I have to look up the date, sorry, I don't have it on me. The 13th of November, at 11:30, the holiday, and I know I would like to attend, I believe some other members may also want to be there.
I would like to, but I think I have a conflict that day.
Oh, okay.
We have time too, so like if somebody wants to add their name on November, we could do that.
If we just, if we just approve the attendance by any Board members that are going to go, then we can take care of the registrations as you check your calendars, so we can do a kind of a blanket approval, and then if you know for sure, we'll add it, and then Mrs. Etter, if you find out later on that you can, then we can, we can just go ahead and add it.
Is that a luncheon, is there a?
That's a luncheon, that's a luncheon.
11:30 is a luncheon.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Munchio, are you gonna add those, like, on the board docs?
Uh, yeah.
Please, super please, okay, thank you. Anything else? A hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbin's.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Suchacki.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next up, comments from the public. Anyone sign in? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna just roll on over to recognition of Students of the Month, Mr. Evans. Give it to you.
And I'm gonna pass it on off to Mr. Coleman for recognitions of Students of the Month.
Thank you. It's my honor to begin with recognizing our sixth grade October Student of the Month, Scott Barrett. Scott.[219.12][219.12](Applause) I'm gonna have you stand right here, so how our Students of the Month kinda form a line as I talk about Scott Barrett. Okay. So Scott is our sixth grade Student of the Month for October. He comes to us from the Village of Valleyview. Mom is Maria, and Dad is Scott. He has a number of siblings. Eddie, who's an eighth grader at Chicago Heights High School. Wes, who is a first grader at Chicago Heights Elementary School. And Johnny, third grader at Chicago Heights Elementary School. I talked to Scott about future plans, and he says he eventually wants to be in architecture, right? I asked him about his favorite subject, and he said science, although math is his second favorite, and he talked about how he enjoys producing art in his free time, so he has science and math, with art backgrounds, he's really well aligned for great careers in architecture, that's a difficult balance to share with Scott. I asked Scott about his favorite teacher, and he said Mrs. Wilson. Of Mrs. Wilson, he said, "She's really nice, she gets to participate a lot in her class, and we get a lot of work done quickly." There's been a big adjustment here at Mill School with things are going well, congratulations to Scott. Now, his team has the following to say about him, our sixth grade team. Scott Barrett has been chosen as a Chicago Heights Mill School Sixth Grade Student of the Month for several reasons. Scott consistently demonstrates an extreme level of pride in everything he does, his desire for knowledge and deep perspective of lessons being taught. Scott never allows his focus and concentration to be led astray. His success in school is a direct result of his strong work ethic and his devotion to learn. Scott also demonstrates many positive leadership qualities, including confidence, self-discipline, pride, and respect towards classmates. His kind words and actions make him a great friend to many. Chicago Heights Mill School probably has such a fine young man as a member of our school community. Congratulations again, Scott.[345.12][345.12](Applause) Next up is Mr. Smith, while I call our seventh grade October Student of the Month, Aaron Decko.[354.81][354.81](Applause) Okay. So Aaron comes to us from the Village of Valleyview. Mom is Jennifer, Dad is Sean. Couple siblings, Colin, tenth grader at Chicago Heights High School, and Addison is a fourth grader down at the elementary school. I asked Aaron about future plans, and kind of what she wants to do when she grows up, and she says, "I wanna work with animal, animals, specifically, I think I wanna be a marine biologist one day." Favorite subject, he said, "English, I really like to read and write." I asked her about her favorite teacher, and she said that was Mrs. Ann Driskin. Of Mrs. Ann Driskin, she says, "She makes it really fun with activities, and she explains information really, really well." All right. Aaron's nominating teacher was Mr. Kovich, and of Aaron, Mr. Kovich says the following: "Aaron is always smiling, and goes out of her way to say hello. She treats her classmates, and I very well meet all the expectations from the class. She seems to enjoy the class, is always willing to help out, and we love having her. Congratulations again, Aaron Decko, Seventh Grade Student of the Month for the Month of October."[429.56][429.56](Applause) All right, you're gonna scoot down just a little bit, Scott, there you go, perfect. Next up, eighth grade Student of the Month, Bella Porter. Bella.[441.12][441.12](Applause) All right, very good, Bella, congratulations. All right, so Bella's our eighth grade Student of the Month for October. She comes to us from the Village of Brooklyn Heights. Mom is Emily, Dad is Patrick, and Grandma's here, Jamie, she's got, there we go, Grandma came, good. Couple siblings, Darby, who's a seventh grader at Mill School, and she has two, two foot five month old twins, a brother and a sister, so it sounds like from our conversation, she does a really good job helping out at home, so good work. We talked about future plans, and she's pretty quick, she said, "I wanna be a therapist one day, I wanna help people, kind of counselor, psychologist, therapist, that type of thing." Asked her about her favorite subject, she said, "Science," again, former scientist, I would love to hear that. She says, "I really like doing lots of hands-on stuff, and do a lot of that in science class." And favorite teacher, she said, "I can't pick one, they're all awesome," so we would love to hear that. The eighth grade team nominated Bella, and they have the following things to say about her. Bella Porter has been a welcomed addition to the eighth grade class at Chicago Heights Mill School. Bella participates often in class and provides thoughtful questions and answers during her discussion. She shows determination and pride in her work. We are very lucky to have her on our team. Congratulations again, eighth grade Student of the Month for October, Bella Porter.[524.12][524.12](Applause) Carolyn Burns, ninth grade Student of the Month for October.[531.12][531.12](Applause) Okay, eighth student of the month for October is Carolyn Burns, comes, comes to us from the Village of Valleyview. Dad is Tim, mom is Carrie Burns. Two siblings, Sam and Danny. Sam just graduated a couple months ago here, class of 2019, and Danny's an eleventh grader at the high school. I asked Carolyn about future plans, and again, immediately didn't hesitate, says, "I wanna be an author." Not only does she wanna be an author, she said, "I wanna move to New York, I then wanna have kids, and then after I have kids and live in New York for a little while, I then wanna move to country," so she's got it all mapped out. That's what starts the plan, for sure. I kinda probed a little bit on what type of writing she wants to do, and she says, "Poetry." She wants to focus on poetry, so that, that looks, sounds amazing. Her favorite subject is English. She said, "The book we are reading right now, Speak, is awesome, the class is amazing, I relate to it so well, I really enjoy that class." And I asked her for her favorite teacher, and sure enough, the side that came up again, she said, "Her personality is awesome, she's a very kind person, she is intelligent, and she's very caring." And again, kind of rhythm to all this, oddly enough, her teacher who nominated her was Miss Silas, so on this side, we had the following to say about Carolyn. Carolyn Burns is one of the most exceptional students I've ever met over a decade of teaching. I have only known Carolyn for a short time, but I've been so impressed by her character and countless acts of leadership and service. Carolyn goes out of her way to help her peers both in and outside of the classroom. She is encouraging, she's concerned for others' wellbeing, she treats everyone she meets with the utmost respect, she's cheerful, she's enthusiastic, and that inspires those around her. In addition, Carolyn is a true leader in and outside of school, she's dependable and volunteers often, even when that service has no benefit to her. Carolyn is an amazing young person, who I do see doing great, a great many things in her life, and a great many things for our community, and I'm so pleased to nominate someone like her for Student of the Month. Congratulations, Carolyn. Wow.[656.62][656.62](Applause) Next up, our tenth grade Student of the Month for October is Zach Bernstein. Come on up, Zach.[666.12][666.12](Applause) Zach's just been on a roll lately, he won the heavyweight belt for the cross-country team a couple weeks back, and were a PDIS Student of the Week here recently, and now he's Student of the Month, so take it all in, Zach, this is your time. Good stuff. All right, so Zach comes to us from the Village of Valleyview. Mom is Kristen, Dad is Ken. Two siblings, Nick, class of 2019, graduated from Saint Ignatius, okay, and then Alyssa, older sister, graduated from Walsh University, it sounded like, recently. I asked Zach about, you know, career plans, what he wants to do, again, no hesitation, since he wants to focus on career landscaping, that's what he wants to do. Favorite subject, again, no hesitation, said math. I asked why, he said, "Because there's a clear right answer and a clear wrong answer." Don't disagree with that. I asked him about favorite teachers, and he narrowed it down to two. He said, "He really appreciates Mr. Patterson's class, he's funny, he's engaging, he makes the content really, really interesting." And then he said, he also wanted to mention Dr. Free, because Dr. Free does a lot for us, he's a fellow student, so he's very funny. All right, his nominating teacher was his art teacher, Mr. Schaefer. So Mr. Schaefer had the following to say about Zach. I'd like to nominate sophomore Zach Bernstein. Zach is a pleasure to have in my photo one class. He has a complete can-do attitude, and it is infectious to everyone he works around. Zach is learning how to organize his creative decisions, and has shown that with his persistent effort developing prints in the darkroom, it can be fun and rewarding. Zach is a prime example of what hard work and a positive attitude is all about. Congratulations again to Zach Bernstein, tenth grade October Student of the Month.[773.12][773.12](Applause) Next up is David Kavis.[778.12][778.12](Applause) Okay. David and I talked this morning for a little bit. They come to us from the Village of Valleyview. They're an extended family, so they want to include everyone, said, "I have lots of family, and they're very important, so we don't wanna forget anyone." So you kind of described it as having two families, right? So one family is Shannon and Mike, Shannon's stepdad, Mike is Dad, and then Christopher and Audrey are tried, like, Christopher, their stepdad, and Audrey is mom. Get that right? Okay, good. And then siblings, we got lots of family, lots of, lots of, lots of children, so Jay Kavis, twelfth grader, correct? Andrew Kavis, ninth grader. Savannah Kavis, tenth grader. So a number of Kavis is here at the high school. And then Trinity, who's a first grader, and then Cameron, who's five years old, not in school yet, and Ariana, who's two years old, that's Dylan. So, again, family, you're talking through, talking through things, and David and Shannon are very important, we've spent a lot of time discussing that. In terms of future plans, he says, "He plans on attending a four-year college, and like one of our other Students of the Month said, he wants to focus on helping people in some way, so becoming a psychologist, focusing on a career in therapy or counseling is, is the direction he wants to examine." Asked him about his favorite subject, he said, "Good decision between Algebra II and Environmental Science." He said, "I like the way both those courses seem to sum up the way the world works around us," so pretty introspective reflection there. I asked them about identifying their favorite teacher, and he said, "It's like trying to choose your favorite color." They're all incredibly, they're very good at communicating, they're very good at teaching, they're, good stuff. Mrs. Sykes, your nutrition teacher, was your nominating teacher, and Mrs. Sykes had the following to say about David. "I am pleased to recommend David Kavis for Student of the Month. In my nutrition class, David has displayed a great interest in the area of foods, is an, and is an asset to my class. He takes the initiative, and works well as an individual and as a group leader. He represents the best of Chicago Heights students, are being carried and helpful in every aspect, and we love having David here." Congratulations again, David Kavis, 11th grade.[914.12][914.12](Applause) And then last, certainly not least, Katrina, Katina, Tricerola. So Katina just got recommended, we're some of these scholars, I'm kidding, man. We already, we already run off her foodos, but I'll pop in in her class tomorrow, try and embarrass her with all this stuff off. That's the kind of thing, yeah. But, again, congratulations to these kids, let's give them a quick hand.[940.12][940.12](Applause) Let's talk about our elementary Students of the Month, thank you very much.
I don't have much of a voice, so. I have two fourth graders tonight to recognize as our Students of the Month. The first one is Alexis Unger.[963.12][963.12](Applause) Alexis lives in Kihauga Heights with her parents, David and Laura, brother Zach, who is 13, and she said she also has another brother, David, who is 30, right? She has a dog named Bean or Sophie, they call the dog both, so I said maybe Sophie Bean, right? And a cat named Bells. When I asked her her favorite subject, she said math is her favorite subject, because she likes learning new facts, and it's fun. She said her favorite essential class is PE, and when she's not in school, she likes to do gymnastics, basketball, softball, cheerleading, those are all things she would like to do as she gets older here in Chicago Heights, and she also likes to have friends over to play games. She talked a lot about being outside, which I thought was really cool. When she grows up, Alexis would like to be a doctor, and I asked her why, and she said, "Because I want to help people, I care a lot about other people," and we can see that every day. She wanted to tell her parents, "Thank you for getting me prepared for everything I need in school." And she was nominated by her teachers, Ms. Falther, Mrs. Stafford, and Mr. Salswimmer, two of them are here tonight. They had the following to say about Alexis. Alexis Unger is the fourth grade Student of the Month. Alexis greets us every day with a smile. Show everyone's smile, yeah. And is ready to learn. She is hardworking and always strives to do her best. She is a role model for her peers and sets a good example in class. Alexis is respectful and kind to both her peers and teachers. We are delighted to have Alexis as our Student of the Month. Next, we have Brody Mahoney.[1077.41][1077.41](Applause) Come on over here, Brody. I won't hurt ya. He's afraid I'll hug him. Don't worry about me hurting people, just hugging them, right? All right. Brody also lives in Kihauga Heights with parents Jennifer and Neil, and his brother Caleb, who is 14. He has two dogs named Pickles and Dilia, which I thought was great. He was saying that you knew you were gonna have another dog coming, so he wanted them to be like Dill, Pickle, right, and so, it's pretty cool. And a turtle named Dory, and they also used to have Nemo, but Nemo is no longer with us, right, so we'll just have Dory. Asked him what his favorite subject is, and he said math also, and he said he likes to learn new strategies to do equations, which is pretty cool, because when I was in your class a couple weeks ago, I got to see that, where you were learning all the different strategies. He said his favorite essential class is music, and he wants to play football, wrestle, and play baseball when he comes to the high school. Outside of school, he likes to do card battles, which is throwing cards. I didn't quite understand, but something to do with throwing cards outside, and whatever, you're outside and you're having fun with your friends, and he likes to play football outside with his friends. He also likes to ride his bike, but he told me it was recently stolen, which is very sad, because he lives right down the street. It's not good. So we're looking, we're in search of the bike. When he grows up, he wants to be a veterinarian, because he's really good with animals, and to his parents, he said, "I am happy that you care for me and that you're not too mean."[1184.83][1184.83](Laughter) We, we got a kick out of that, David. Brody was nominated by his fourth grade teachers, Ms. Falther, Mr. Salswimmer, and Mrs. Stafford, and they said, "Brody Mahoney is the fourth grade Student of the Month. Brody is organized and always prepared for his classes, he works well independently and with others, he is kind and polite to both his peers and teachers. Brody demonstrates being a leader in the classroom, and we are pleased to have Brody as our Student of the Month." Congratulations, Brody.[1218.12][1218.12](Applause) I'm gonna ask all of-
Getting back to the meeting, it is up to you, Mr. Munchio, to do your business, please.
Thank you, President Schukert. Couple recommendations tonight. First, recommendation 5A, motion to approve the minutes of the September 18th, 2019 regular meeting, and the October 9th, 2019 regular meeting, as found in attachment T1. Next recommendation, 6A, motion to accept the bank reconciliation, financial reports, and payments for board review as of September 30th, 2019, as prepared and certified by the treasurer's accurate, as found in attachment T2. Next recommendation, 6B, motion to approve new vendors to the school district for W9s attached, as found in attachment T3. Next recommendation, 6C, motion to accept the attached list of donations received through September 30th, 2019, as found in attachment T4. Recommendation, 6D, motion to approve the student activity programs for the 2019-20 school year, as indicated per the purpose statements on file in the treasurer's office, as found in attachment T5. Last recommendation, recommendation 6E, motion to approve the resolution authorizing the advancement of local taxes by the Kihauga County Fiscal Office for the 2019 tax year payable in 2020, as found in attachment T6.
Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's business consent agenda motions? Moved by Mrs. Etter.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Naaman. Any discussion?
Yep. For recommendation 6A, the financial reports, I have copies in front of everybody, and for Lindy and Maria, all are attached there. I just wanted to point out just three sheets. So our first one's our lead sheet that we have. This is just our general fund, this is our overview for where we're at. Again, we started the year, far left-hand corner in the blue, highlight at the very top, thirteen million, eight hundred seventy thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars. Where we're looking to end the year is in the very bottom right-hand corner, twelve million, six hundred eighty thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. So that's approximately about a one million dollar deficit. So we are on the downward slope of deficit spending in this fiscal year, but again, the forecasts are very conservative, so I just want everybody, it's not an aggressive estimate, it's a conservative one, so more or less it's gonna, you know, shrink that million dollar deficit, is the hope. But we're on target for all the estimates that we have. Next month is the five-year forecast that we have, so this is gonna change, but not materially. But, just wanted everybody to see what we're at. On the two sheets behind, and for Maria and Lindy, if you could go to T2U as an umbrella, then T2V as in Valentine. And what we're looking at would be the 200-fund student activity accounts that we have here, and I picked these out tonight to go over, because tonight we're board approving the activity purpose statements for those accounts. So, when I get to that one recommendation, I'll, we'll pull up an example and look at it, but what we have here for T2U umbrella, far right-hand side in the orange, the estimates, those are all gonna get updated with each activity purpose statement that we look at. So those would be the revenues that the students are estimating would, they would bring in for their activity account that they have. On the sheet behind it, T2V, same thing, it's gonna be the expenses, and in the black on the far right, those numbers are gonna get adjusted for what the students are thinking their expenses are gonna be. And then each line that we have would be a different activity account. So if we look, we can see number three for the revenue, and number three for the expenses is Spanish Club. So Spanish Club, we can see so far for September, on the revenue side, T2U, that they brought in two hundred and sixty dollars, and above that, we have a description of what it is. So they had a food truck, which was very good Mexican food, I remember buying a couple tacos that night, and a t-shirt sale. So we should see both the food truck and the t-shirt sale on the student's activity purpose statement. And again, these are 200-level funds, so they're student-managed, not district-managed, which would be 300. So we give them guidance, but really, the students are driving the car on this one, so. So no questions, we'll keep moving along?
Just to interject there, I, just, based on what I heard, this was a record number of homecoming tickets that were sold this year. I think Mr. Coleman told me they were well over, they sold well over 200 homecoming tickets, and I can't, for the life of me, remember the numbers ever being that high for homecoming, so great job, my spirit, apparently it was a well-tended evening, but great job by the, by the student council at homecoming.
Moving along, are there no questions for recommendation G or C, which would be new vendors or donations?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just wondering if there's an explanation for the, we managed to get a donation from Brexwell Broadview Heights, just wondering how that worked and what that's all about. Dave? The, there's a, one of the donations this month is from Brexwell Broadview Heights for some Cisco networking equipment. How did that all come about? Just curious.
They basically just put out a message on the list, or asked them if there's any districts that were interested in the network to the boost, and, like, "Yeah, sure," you know, and they decided to support it. They did, they networked for fresh, and they didn't want to throw them away, so if we're all set for the year, we want them.
That's good, okay, well, at the Career Center meeting tomorrow night, I'll be sitting next to the rep from Brexwell Broadview Heights, so I'll make sure to, to thank him publicly for that one.
It's pretty nice cooperation, James.
And if we can go to 6D, which would be the student activity purpose statements that we have, and if everybody can look at the content, and if we click on that attachment, which is T5.
I'm sorry, where am I going?
Recommendation 6D. And then if we go to content on our tabs, and click on T5.
Okay.
And what that brings up is our first one, which is gonna be Spanish Club. So this is the student activity purpose form that we have set up for the students, and I just wanna publicly, publicly thank Kathy Martin, our Assistant Treasurer, for redoing these forms. So she took the old forms that we had, and redid them, and these are the new forms, new and improved.
Nice. They look sharp, like they're easy to read.
Absolutely, did a great job.
They are easy to read.
At the very top, we, yep, we can see Spanish Club, we can see the account number, 200, 912, I think that's an eight. We can see the advisor, Christine Bennett, and we can see the students, president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. Below that, they have their purpose and intent statement, kinda cut it off there. We can see the carryover balance from prior year, we can see the number of students that are gonna be participating, and any dues, if they did have it, would be in the box to the right over there. Then we can see the fundraising activities that they're gonna have for the year, and then they put the estimated revenues and expenses that they would have, so there were no expenses for the food truck, so that's complete profit that they had, and the students estimated that that would bring in about $200. We can see Chipotle, in March of 2020, the students are anticipating that that's gonna bring in $200 as well for that fundraiser. They have a Latin dance event that they wanna put on, no revenue, but estimated expenses of $320. So we'll see that dance pop up as an expenditure under Spanish Club, eventually. They have a service project, but nothing listed on that line. They have a carnation sale in February, so it looks like they're gonna estimate $300 worth of revenue generated from that, and they're gonna purchase the flowers for about $150. So it's gonna be about a $150 profit for that fundraiser for the students. They have a Cookie Grams, October, which I'm not quite sure exactly what Cookie Grams is, but-
You buy a cookie for like a friend or whatever, and you can write a little message.
Okay.
Or your kid can write one to themselves, like mine do.[1773.56][1773.56](Laughter)
I think I'm officially old, because I didn't know that, so, that's awesome. So they're estimating that they're gonna bring in $200 for the Cookie Grams, and then they have written in t-shirts, so they're gonna purchase t-shirts and sell them, and they were gonna break even on that, too. too. So, I'm gonna total up all the revenues, total up all the expenses, and plug them in for those two sheets. And then I roll up all the expected revenues and all the expected expenses, and I provide that to the county for appropriations for funds. So, that's how it kinda works within one single Activity Purpose Statement. We have all of them here, too.
So, we as a board have to approve the activities, the purpose statements, but we don't necessarily have to approve the expenditures, right?
No, just the statements.
Got it. Okay, thanks. Sorry.
That one. Recommendation 6E, that, this is a typical yearly resolution that we're gonna have. All it does is allows us to get our local taxes from Cuyahoga County quicker and advance to us. So, instead of them just giving it all to us in one check in March or whenever, they can now give us advances on that money. So, they can give us a little bit in January, a little bit in February, and the balance, the remaining portion in March. So, that helps with our cash balance. Every school gets them advanced to them.
Is this a change? Is this something that's cooperative with the county, or this is something?
No, this has been going on as far as I've been in the business, I guess you could say.
And the advances are without interest charge, correct? It's just advancing our own money to us?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
That's good.
I'm telling the whole thing.
Sorry?
Go ahead and tell me the whole thing.
Whole thing.
They advance us the money without the resolution that previously issued.
Oh, I'll save that for now. And that would conclude the recommendations I have for tonight.
Okay. Any other discussions on the Treasurer's business? Harry Munro, please.
Mrs. Edder.
Hi.
Mr. Naaman.
Hi.
Mr. Shujaki.
Hi.
Mr. Dobbins.
Hi.
Mrs. Shuker.
Motion passes five to zero. Treasurer's discussions or comments? Back to you, Mr. Machio.
First item for discussion would be our timeline for the five-year forecast. If everybody's able to click on 6A, I have it written out there, and I think we discussed this, excuse me, 8A, I can make sense of 6A, 8A.
I have a best meeting schedule, is that?
Yeah, that's, the public content is where it's at.
Okay, gotcha.
So, for the public content, November 2019, five-year forecast timeline. So, at the end of October 2019, we'll have a finance committee or early 2000, excuse me, early November 2019, we'll have a finance committee scheduled. November 6th, 2019, is gonna be the regular board meeting that we're gonna have a work session to discuss the entire five-year forecast. November 14th is the best committee meeting, in which we're gonna be reviewing the five-year forecast for the best committee. And then November 20th, we'll bring it back to the Board of Education for final approval.
It might be, it might be actually, it depends. I think we scheduled the finance committee meeting for the end of October or the first couple of days of November, so-
Did you schedule, is it scheduled?
It's actually, I sort of doodled it up this morning to everybody.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, just take a look at it. I think that there's, maybe we have like three or four responses. There's still some individuals that are outside that are still to respond to, so.
Next discussion item is gonna be 8B, and this deals with our yearly audit. So, we're gonna have to schedule an audit exit conference as well as an audit entrance conference with the audit team from the Auditor of State's office. If we're able to schedule it for our next upcoming board meeting, which would be November 6th, we would look to do it at around 7:00 o'clock when the meeting starts. And since this is their meeting, it's kinda like executive session that they invite us into their meeting, so we'd have to take recess and go. But it shouldn't last more than 20 minutes or give or take.
Sure. Yeah, we used to do them at 6:30, and then we'd have to kill 15 minutes before the board meeting. Either way.
It's the same team that was here last year, so we're gonna see Matt Goldman as well as Caitlin Darno. And actually, they sat with us, Mr. Evans and myself, and we went through kind of preliminary discussions on the audit exit, a little bit of the entrance conference, not much. The next discussion item, so I'll let them know that 7:00, November 6th, is good for everybody here. Okay. The next discussion item is gonna be 8C, which is the State Software Redesign. What I included for everyone here in the public content is the timeline, proposed timeline that Neonet has. And if we open it up, it's the Software Migration Timeline Attachment. And we can see where we sit. So, we're gonna be quarter four in the 1920-year timeframe that Neonet has. So, we invited Neonet at a past meeting, and Lisa Nash and Kim, their fiscal officer, came, presented both of the benefits and drawbacks, I guess you can say, of eFinance Plus as well as the State Software Redesign, which essentially the only two ways schools can go at this point. It's interesting to look at this software migration timeline, because any schools that are planning to go with eFinance Plus, Neonet's asking them to change the font color to purple, and there are only two on here. There are a couple others that already went there, but the majority of schools are going with the State Software Redesign. So-
So is the Career Center, by the way.
And we, you know, from talking with the Treasurer's Office and Administration, you know, the thought was to do it sooner than later, because if we did it later, maybe we're not gonna have as much invested time from Neonet that they could give us, you know, to help us with the transition. Plus, we don't wanna be, you know, up against the end when, you know, the current software is not gonna be supported anymore. So, the thought was to do it sooner than later. And they gave us our second choice for what we have. So, this works, but it's gonna, you know, it's gonna, we're gonna make it as seamless as possible for everybody. So, I don't think too many people outside the Treasurer's Office are really even gonna notice anything. So, it's all gonna be kind of inside. I think-
Is the team ready?
I'm gonna hold you to that.
Seamus.
We're ready, we're ready. But we'll give an update to the board before we go in, and then we'll give a update to the board on how it's going. And then, once we complete it, we'll give an update to the board. So, the board will be, we'll communicate with the board the entire way through, so everybody's seeing this. I close out of here and we go to-
In terms of your financial presentations to us, the spread, the spreadsheets and things, should we expect that content to change?
No.
Okay.
No, I would expect those to be the same all the way through, because these are generated in Excel by myself. So, the only thing that would change would be perhaps the FINSUM, which I don't think is gonna be a FINSUM anymore, but maybe something similar to what they were describing as the reports, so.
Yes, could you, actually, do you interface to these reports, these Excel reports? Did you, do you actually, like, download them from, like, the application?
I do everything by hand.
Wow, that's a lot, that's a lot of work.
It is, but it's, you know, it's the attention to detail.
No, actually, yeah, it probably, yeah, it probably helps with actually knowing every single account, everything, too.
Yeah.
But it's a lot of work, though. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Next discussion item, 8D, just wanna have this on our front burner. This is, you know, discussion item for board work session, special meeting for levies that we have. We know, we've been talking about our capital improvement plan that we have, we've been having GPD come in for our meetings, I've been talking with Mr. Evans. You know, this would be, you know, a benefit to myself, Mr. Evans and the board to have the experts really come in and, you know, provide further guidance to us. And we would love to have a meeting with both GPD's, School Finance Team, as well as Enos Britton's School Finance Team to come in.
What are we thinking timeframe for that, like, what month?
I would defer to Mr. Evans on the exact timeframe.
I think we're probably looking at about February or so. I'm just being, I wanna be a little bit cautious, because I don't want people to get the impression that it's gonna be out in the spring. So, as I said, sometimes when you publicize it, we're having a discussion about levies, people rush to, you know, it, there's gonna be a lot to communicate out to people as far as where we're at and how we're approaching this. I think by that time, we will have a more solid timeline with the overall plan, with its, with the levy and the implementation of the plan, so that, those will all work hand in hand together, so.
We could talk, too, about February being on the timeline to have like a community meeting, kinda like we did before to get some input.
Yes.
Just thinking, if we have this afterwards, maybe we can get people to attend this type of, you know, because I think the information is gonna be very, you know, informative, and I think that for the average person, including me, that doesn't know a lot about levies and all the, you know, the lingo and stuff like that, I think it might help to publicize it.
That's a good idea. It's one night out for people, too. We're not, we're not, we're not asking them to come back on a couple separate occasions, so I think that-
Oh, I didn't mean to put it on the same night, but-
Well, we could very easily do that on the same night. We could do one in, to start off the meeting, and then, and then go like right into the meeting with GPD and, depending on what we think the time's gonna be for those.
Right, just thinking.
I don't wanna make it a four-hour night, but if it's, if it's something that we could do in two, two and a half hours, it might be best served in one evening, especially if we get a decent audience here.
We, I noticed that the second presentation, the GPD presentation, seems to be emphasizing bond issues.
Because that's what they do. That, they don't, they don't, they don't work, they don't do, they do bond iss, they have a bond consultant, they don't have a levy consultant, so they're-
Okay.
And then that, that's merely to give you information as a board to help us to determine what direction we're gonna, we've talked about one specific direction, but we wanna make sure that we lay out all the facts in front of you and make a decision, so.
Usually bond issues have to do with facilities, like structures and things like that.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Not necessarily like-
We've talked a lot about permanent improvement, a permanent improvement levy in the, but we would be, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't lay all the options out in front and say, almost, you know, here are the advantages and the disadvantages of each. I think it's pretty obvious which way Matt and I are leaning. But again, that doesn't mean we're not the decision-makers, and we're gonna, we're gonna work for whatever we think is gonna best serve the district, so. And that's ultimately gonna be the decision of the board.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna confuse the issue too much, but there is just reasonable purpose and justification for looking at all the options.
Absolutely.
Even if one of them at the moment is not on the table.
Absolutely, even if one is very quickly discounted, we say we don't, we don't wanna, I think you wanna see all that in front of you and say-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we-
This is what makes that, we have made a decision. Again, I don't want, yeah, I want, as a board, I want you to have all the information in front of you, because Matt and I are certainly leaning in one direction, but we gotta take a little bit of bias out of it and know that, as we, as we move forward with it, so.
Okay, all right.
Next discussion item, 8E, OSBA Capital Conference. Mr. Naaman, you have your ticket and a little booklet with all the classes.
Thank you very much.
So, everybody should have their tickets. I know Mr. Evans sent out the Excel spreadsheet that has kind of all the classes and timelines that we're going with, so. Are there no questions on that?
That's a little bit easier to look at, too. I mean, you can cross-reference some with the book and the descriptions, but that, that Google Doc's out there, so Maria, you're giving me that look like you don't know what I'm talking about.
I brought my book again, my piece of paper. I did it through the paper, but I don't remember getting the document.
It was a while ago.
Yeah, I shared it, yeah, last, yeah.
The initials are in it.
I didn't open it, but I saw it. I don't think I did that.
I like doing the book, too, Maria, like, I'm still working on the book, and then I'll go to his thing and check it out.
My just place of mind, the name of the, in the timeframe. So, some of you can see, and one of the reasons for doing that is some of them cross over. So, if you're in a session that goes from 9:00 to 11:30, you can't go to the one that goes from 10:30 to 12:00.
Yes.
So, because, and that's, for me, the visual person that I am, it just, it makes it a little bit easier.
And if you're, when you're looking at it, you may have noticed that in one, some, in a couple of timeframes, I put in my initials in two places, which means I'm not sure yet.
Right.
As a senior, see below, you know.
Yeah, I remember doing that.
And there's always things that are interesting that, you say, I'd like to get to that, but based on where we're at, it doesn't happen, so.
And sometimes things are described better than they end up being.
Well, and-
Absolutely. And you can leave, like, people come in or, you know, if a session's not good or it's something that you already know, you can go-
Absolutely. I saw Gary last year, I got up and I walked out, and I said it wasn't, it wasn't at all what I thought it was gonna be. I spent about two minutes, and I said, well, I'm not gonna sit through 45 minutes of this, it just isn't, it doesn't have any value for me.
Yeah, I think I've done this actually three times in one, oh, I didn't like that one, I didn't like that one either.
And to be 100% honest, even the one that we're sponsoring is more of a commercial for field turf. So, it's geared for somebody that's considering going to field turf. So, the one that we sponsor as a district that we're putting on, I've met with a gentleman twice, I haven't met the professor from Utah yet, I'll do that when I'm there, but that's, that's kind of their commercial as to why you wanna go with field turf and why theirs is, why their product's better than maybe some other people's. And I'm just there to say, yeah, I'm just working for us, so.
I'm gonna look that up.
Had a couple more items tonight. One was Eventbrite. So, I forwarded everybody the article from Channel 19 and the video over the weekend, hopefully everybody was able to watch that. So, that, you know, came as a shock, and we, at this point, suspended taking credit cards through Eventbrite at this point. We did get the remaining $288 sent to us, which means, yes, which means we are even. So, everything that they owed us, we've collected. It seems like from the article that the previous company, which is called Ticket War, is looking to file for bankruptcy. Eventbrite is the new company, I guess, I'm not sure how, maybe they bought them out or somehow, so they're going forward, Eventbrite. Eventbrite is, I guess, saying that, you know, they're honoring everything, so they're operating just as, you know, a normal business would. I wanna take a wait-and-see approach, just to see how everything pans out before-
Yeah, we'll wait. Maybe a couple of years to see. They got their feet on the ground.
But a lot of schools that are out money, it seems like transactions that occurred before August of this year, well before that. So, we signed an agreement, I believe, February of 2019. We did one test with them last school year on like a play, I believe. We did collect all of our money, 'cause we, all our eyes were on that. And then we started this football season doing that, which was September, so that got us out of the timeframe before August, so. But yes, we collected everything, so we're on even ground with them, and everything's suspended at this point, so.
And for big districts, it really, it's an economy of scale. I mean, when you've got, if you're at Solon and you've got 2,000 people at a football game, it certainly relieves some pressure from having a lot of people standing at the gateway for a ticket to get into the stadium, 'cause they only have two entrances at Solon Stadium. So, it really, for them, it's, you know, we generally don't draw 2,000 people, so things move a little bit quicker here for us. But it was, it was certainly a convenience factor. If it is something that proves to be safe for us, then I think we'll venture down that road again, especially with away games, that if they're gonna honor our tickets, it's a, for, it's a lot easier for our parents, that type of thing. You know, it beats somebody having to come up to school to buy a ticket for the football game, what have you, so.
I know that there's other things, like, some of the organizations use like Cvent and those types of things, where you have, you can just, you can put a credit card in and actually, you know, to buy, to get an entrance to an event, and it would print out a sheet that it can be at the entrance, you could say that these people are prepaid already. And I guess, if you really wanted to do that, I don't know if it's worth it based upon volumes and things like that.
We're gonna catch our breath here right now, just to let the dust settle. And we don't have anything that too major coming up, so it doesn't, we're in good shape with it, so.
Good. Last couple. Tomorrow's the all-boards dinner at the CBCC. I know my name was initially down there. The five-year forecast, I'm adding a lot into this one, so I'm probably gonna be working pretty late tomorrow night, so I'm gonna skip that one this year, but next year, I'm down for it. And the last item I have for tonight is, I'm gonna invite Mr. Dave Wallace to speak on this, too. We recently received a fraudulent email, so we do, seems like, almost every month or every other month, and we forward that to tech, our IT department, and they deal with it. But I wanted Dave to kind of, you know, tell everybody here what the most recent one was.
Yeah, so October marks the National Cyber Security Awareness Month, and from what you've probably seen in our emails, we're sending out information about what happens in the background of how to keep your account safe. Odds are, all the attacks are some type of email download or some malware download on your computer, from there, it goes on to wherever it goes. But a lot of what happens, happens because users click on items that they shouldn't be, or it looks legitimate and it's not. So, our most recent attack was from an employee here, or wasn't an employee here, a fake employee here, um, basically spoofed their email address, sent it to Yalisa and said, hey, we're looking to change our direct deposit, um, you know, can I send you my routing number, my account number, and go from there. Now, you know, Yalisa's smart about it, you know, she's aware of what's going on. She said, this looks weird, the reply to email is different than where it actually came from. Um, so she was like, put two, two together and said, you know, we're not gonna do this. And of course, we don't do it anyway, because we require everybody to do it in person, um, you know, for Matt. So, um, it's a great policy to have in place. Yalisa sent it to me. I looked at all the metadata along with the email. It looks like, um, a cruise company got hacked in Texas and somehow got this person's email address, spoofed it, sent it out to us trying to get us to change our account numbers on the system. The person that registered that account in, um, Texas, um, or wherever it's registered at, is actually from the UK. So immediately it just goes away from the United States, and once you do that, you can't get any authorities involved. So, we didn't record it, we marked it as spam, we blocked the sender, you know, and we're, we're keeping, um, up to date on that. So anytime there's a breach like that, especially involving financial or treasures office, we look at it, we investigate it, and just make sure everybody stays safe. But it's all about bringing awareness to, you know, being smart on the line, reading what it says, you know, thinking it's a good, too, too good to be true. You know, do you really have an uncle that has fifty million dollars that's willing to give it to you? You know, you don't. So, uh, you know, so that's the whole idea of this month, and just provide awareness.
That, that's actually great. So say, so Yalisa caught it and actually, before actually anything actually happened, and just brought your attention then.
Correct.
That's really good. So then the awareness program's working really well. And that, that's good, because actually, the, the, those attacks, we're seeing a lot of as well, because, um, what they're, what they're, people are doing is targeting high-level executives and their payroll accounts, and actually switching their, asking the same thing, having those, those, you know, spoofed emails go into another, um, from another person, asking that, like, saying that they're this executive and saying to switch your bank account numbers. And then, um, and then the deposit goes in there. And so the controls that stop that is basically, there's like, you, you get a, when there's a change made, that's sort of like a manual paycheck that's issued before you actually start the direct deposit, and that's the control that usually catches that, which is really, really good. So, yeah, you, I mean, and actually, I think it was so prominent that they even had the alerts on the, on PNC's website that says that the direct deposit accounts are being, are being, like, um, trying to be taken over through these attacks like this, too, as well. And I, I looked at that as well. So it's, it's kind of interesting. It's, it's, it's happening everywhere, all over the place.
Yeah. And you've seen all the news articles about the different schools that got hit, the malware, or locked out their whole system. You know, we're taking this one step further. We're, we're starting tomorrow to segment our network so that, you know, our treasures office is completely off our network, our academic network. So, you know, something would happen, would spread, you know, it would still be operational, while we handle, you know, the mitigation of the ransomware attack or whatever, maybe. So, um, it's a continuous thing. We're learning every day. Something's new every day, but, um, we're on top of it, so.
Thank you, Dave, too. I want to say, just for the emails, how you're doing, like, the informative emails.
Thank you very much.
They're, they're really good. I mean, they, they really are. I mean, that, that, that's neat that you're bringing that out and to the staff members and everything, too. And, um, and, you know, it's, it's really working, because, like, right, you know, the, the treasures office is gonna be the, the primary target to get, get the cash out the door, and that's what they're gonna be targeting for deposits or AP or whatever. So I, it's great. It's working. It's working. So someone came to you, so.
Yeah. And it's a good thing that you had the forethought to keep that policy where someone personally has to go in and change, because without that, this easily could have been a disaster.
Right.
And, and knowing that, with Yalisa knowing that, you know, that was, that was really good. So, good forethought on, on doing that, on Mr. Muccio.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, you're up.
All righty. Sorry, I'm scrolling back up here. Okay, superintendents' business. Uh, approval of purchase over, purchase order over five thousand dollars. Motion to approve purchase orders over five thousand dollars as recommended per the attached list. Ten, staff resignations. Uh, A, approved resignation of Shil Sapata as band bus driver effective nine twenty-five nineteen. B, approved resignation of Desiree Sali as middle school student council advisor effective nine twenty-five nineteen. C, approved resignation of Missy Hartman Santiago as student monitor effective ten, seven, two thousand and nineteen. Eleven, employment certified staff. A, approved employment of Joseph King. Motion to approve employment of Joseph King as a long-term substitute during nineteen twenty school year effective January sixth, two thousand twenty, per the adopted student, substitute teacher rate until the return of the regular teacher effective, and effective on the sixty-first day. Approved employment per the adopted teacher's salary schedule be a step one at, per DM rate. Uh, twelve, employment of classified staff. Motion to approve Colleen Murray as cafeteria staff member on a one-year limited contract, two thousand nineteen, twenty, effective ten twenty-four, per the adopted cafeteria staff salary schedule step one. Twelve, twenty-nine per hour, four hours per day contingent upon successful completion, BCI FBI background checks. Thirteen, employment of supplemental positions. Uh, motion to approve the listed individuals on supplemental contracts in stipulated positions for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year per the adopted wage schedule contingent upon successful completion of BCI FBI background checks if applicable. Fourteen, employment substitutes and volunteers. Uh, A, motion to approve attached substitute teacher list, two thousand nineteen, twenty, uh, for October two thousand nineteen by the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio. And B, approve employment, uh, motion to approve the employment of Mark Chase as a cafeteria staff substitute on an as-needed basis for nineteen twenty, effective October twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, per the miscellaneous pay rate schedule for substitute cafeteria staff contingent upon successful completion of BCI FBI background checks. Fifteen, agreements, contracts, and memberships. A, uh, motion to approve the, an eighth grade overnight trip to Washington, DC, April seventh through ninth, two thousand twenty, per the attachment. B, motion to approve agreement with Neola for updating the policy manual to cost of two thousand two hundred and fifty per attachments. C, uh, motion to approve the inter-district service area contract at the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for two thousand nineteen, twenty, per attachments. Uh, D, motion to approve, uh, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Cogahite School District's gifted identification service plan per the attachment. E, approve the MOU with Cleveland Clinic, a motion to approve the MOU with Cleveland Clinic Foundation for drug testing screening to support Cogahite's high school, middle school, drug-free clubs of America at no cost to the district, per the attachment. F, motion to approve GBC equipment maintenance agreement for the elementary school's laminator with GBC finishing group at a cost of four hundred and ninety-one dollars, per the attachments. G, motion to approve additional students to the non-public transportation request list for two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year who is omitted from the list approved on nine, nineteen, two thousand eighteen, as listed below. H, motion to approve agreement with Johnson Dance and Gymnastics for rental of the studio for two thousand nineteen, twenty gymnastics season, per the attachment. I, motion to approve application for approval of settlement agreement with workman's compensation, claim, claim number fifteen dash eight-five-seven-seven-seven-one. J, uh, motion to approve Board of Education participation in two thousand nineteen, twenty cooperative school bus purchasing program to authorize Ohio Schools Council to advertise and receive bids on behalf of Cogahite Schools for the purchase of one eighty-four passenger transit-style Type D school bus chassis and body. K, uh, motion to approve addendum to the service agreement for PSI services for two thousand nineteen, twenty school year for an additional medical assistance substitute for November sixth, two thousand nineteen, and one, and additional hours as needed at a rate of tw- twenty dollars and seventeen cents per hour, per the attachment. L, uh, motion to approve an agreement with the Village of Cogahite to share in the purchase, construction, operation, and maintenance of digital marquees signed to be installed on the grounds of the school district to display messages from either, either or both parties and authorize related expenditures as needed, per the attachment. Um, sixteen, approve, I, I asked approval of the, uh, above, uh, motions.
Okay. Um, just a quick question.
Shoot.
L, didn't we want to take off the marquee thing?
No. That, actually, the, the, the attachment's incorrect, and so there'll, there'll be a change to the contract. So I'm looking for just a, the, the board to approve that we enter into the contract, and it's, the contract will be the same with the exception of the, the
Location.
Location.
Okay.
It's not gonna go over the existing board. It's actually gonna go right here, so.
Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's business consent agenda?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Naaman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Suchacki. Discussion.
Just going through, uh, eleven is, uh, Joe King will be filling in for a staff member on the turntable. Joe's done long-term subs for us before, does a great job. Fifteen A, Mr. Tartaro's already conducted the initial parent meeting for the DC trip, but plans underway on that one. Fifteen B, this is to conduct an audit of our current policies and their alignment with Ohio Revised Codes. We know we've got some holes in there. Uh, Neola's gonna go back through and, and, and verify against what they have and against what ORC has and what's required for us. I know that probably dating back to when, actually, when Ed Holland was here.
Yeah.
The policies got redone, we switched over, and many, many things went to the parking lot, which might as well have been a black hole that never came back. And, and so we, they never got approved, they never got discussed. And I, we have no idea of what those were or where they are or how. So we need a, we really need an audit, soup to nuts, to make sure that we've got everything in our policy that we need to have.
Yeah. And I sat through that, and yes, we'd have meetings and you'd put stuff in the parking lots that you couldn't agree on, and because of all of the other challenges that we were facing at that timeframe, we never got back to any of those things. So there could be a lot of things missing, there could be things that are inappropriate, so I just kind of backed it up on this.
Just for, just for peace of mind, just have Neola go through and say.
I was saying it's seven years ago.
Yeah.
You know, it's probably time, or eight, almost eight years ago now. It's probably the time to do it anyway.
Uh, fifteen C is the updated ESC agreement. Fifteen D is the gift that plan required by ODE. We have to have a plan on file with ODE. Fifteen I, uh, there's no out-of-pocket expense to the district. The carrier is gonna cover the amount of the settlement. So while we're approving the settlement, it's actually, we're approving for our, our workman's comp carrier to make the payment. We settle on an amount that falls within what, what they're gonna cover for us. So there's nothing additional, uh, for us on that. Fifteen J, it locks us into a bus price, it doesn't commit us to purchasing a bus. We've done that before.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that holds the price over for us. Fifteen K, uh, the board asked to approve the sub, and that, then I think we, we use a nurse on a DC trip and maybe some other things, so we have to have approval from the board for that in the digital sign, assignment agreement with the village. I will tell you that, that, uh, they're gonna pay for, that we could've got, we could, we got two foot more assigned, and I'm gonna use, uh, grant money to cover that. It's, it's, it's gonna be less than five thousand dollars, so that won't be district money. It's money that I have through, through a grant, uh, because the difference between, I think, seven foot and nine foot is, it, it just, there's a difference. And I thought for the amount of money, I talked to Mayor Bachi, but I said, I said, I'll use some grant money on this. I, I didn't want it, in the eleventh hour, come to the board and say, if we pony up a little bit. So, we're gonna get a little bit more bored, and, um, they're gonna, they want to get, yeah, once we get the approval to them, they're gonna break around and get, get started on, on, on the sign. So we're excited about that. And the way that that'll operate, I think I may have mentioned this before, is that, uh, uh, Mayor Bachi's secretary is a year on employees, so what we will do is we will email our, um, announcements over there, and they just digitally punch them in, on, on the computer. So nobody, uh, that I, the, the picture in the yearbook of Mr. Amicon and myself changing the sign in February of whenever it was, when it was, I can tell you, it was bitterly cold that day, that he came and got me out of class to change the sign, and I remember it very vividly, um, as a student council officer. Uh, well, we'll never have to do again, so. Well, we'll never have to traumatize another student council officer for the rest of our life on changing the sign in the middle of winter.
Is there, um, so I was looking through, is there any concern about, there's a couple of items in there, like continued maintenance and the self-help paragraph under seven point two. Are there, I mean, has John looked at this?
John, John's taken a look at it. He said, uh, he, he said, there, there could be some tweaks, he goes, but there's nothing, there's no major, he, the one thing he said, he goes, that, why that length? I go, that was what they want to do for like that. I don't, I don't believe the signs are gonna last for ninety-nine years.
Ninety-nine years.
But, but, um, he goes, that, there's nothing that says that in, in twenty-five years, you just say, we come up with another agreement and put another sign up at that point in time. So we're not locked into that.
Right. But it did sound a little bit open-ended of, on some of those items.
Well, I, I will tell you that, once this, once the sign goes in, that, that we're gonna landscape it. Uh, we've got Frank here and, uh, we've got some sunset, fun set aside on building maintenance. So we're, we're gonna kind of have, put a backdrop to it with some landscaping and, uh, and, and Jack's completely on board with that, so, you know.
They're not, they're not helping us with the landscaping anymore?
No, I told him that. We, we, we've got the parole over here. We'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
He trusts me on that one.
All right. As long, as long as John's comfortable with those items, I hope, too.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what I have.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Naaman.
Hi.
Mr. Suchacki.
Hi.
Mrs. Edder.
Hi.
Mr. Dobbins.
Hi.
Mrs. Schukert.
Hi. Motion passes five to zero. Mr. Evans' consent, or, I'm sorry, discussion and comments.
A couple of things. Uh, we had a, Matt and I met with, um, GPD, um, with Mark, Jason, and one of the structural architects, and they had talked about, uh, some of that structural work in the back, in the, on the back wall of the gymnasium. And after their structural person looked at it, they, they wanted to recommend that we get that done now. Although he didn't, he said, it's not, it's gonna come down this week, but he goes, but that, that's probably something we want to take care of before, rather than after. And I, I'm in agreement with that. Uh, they're gonna drop an estimate for us. We'll be back to the board about that. But repairing that back wall where it's kind of cracked and, um, moving forward. So, um, once again, GPD is so professional in their approach, it's really a breath of fresh air. And I, I actually asked, because we had the pool report, I actually asked their structural engineer if he could take a look at that report and maybe evaluate that for me. And then, i- if we want GPD to maybe take a look at the pool once he's looked at that report, I may, I may be back and discussing that with the board. But I will tell you that that pool report cost us almost as much as the report for the entire district did from GPD. We paid twenty thousand dollars for the pool report, we paid twenty-five thousand dollars for the entire district through GPD. And that was an OSC, that was an OSC recommendation, too, that we went with an OSC company on that. So, um, um, the, the service that we've gotten from GPD has been fantastic, so. Pep Prentis Super Bowl last Thursday. They're on Channel Eight. Ali Gambari came out and in, in, and he is, uh, at first I didn't know who he was. And then when I, as soon as I watched the film of what he did, it's clear why he wins awards every year.
Oh, yes.
Because he's setting the camera on the ground and kind of walking away from it and going, what, what in the world is this guy doing? And, and he, um, made the mistake of interviewing me. But, um, but, um, uh, the number of phone calls that I've gotten from people not associated with our district, just on what a wonderful thing it was for us to do. And, uh, it, overwhelming, and, and, and I'm just gonna share a short story. Yeah, I got a call, yeah, actually Sandy spent like a half an hour on the phone with this woman. He goes, she said, you have to talk to her. She had me in tears, so she started talking to me, that her grandchild was out there and did the coin flip, and she was going on and on and on. And we're trying to get a hold of the, the video, because Channel Eight didn't post it. Um, so we're trying to get a hold, because a lot of those parents want to see it, because their kids were in it. And, uh, um, and she said, you know, I drove a bus for Berea for forty years. I said, well, then you drove me on the bus at some point in time. And she, and she said, is this Tom Evans? The, I, I said, yes, it is. And it was Avril, who was one of, who I would ask for as a bus driver, who, who was like the greatest, I, whenever I had a trip to make with the wrestling team or the football team, I'd always ask for Avril, because she was fantastic with the kids. And so we talked for a while, but there was her granddaughter that did the coin toss out there. And she was just so overwhelmed with what a great experience this was for her granddaughter, as a lot of the parents were. And it was funny, because even talking to the principal, you know, we sent our buses over for the kids and brought them back on our buses. Some of those kids had never ridden a school bus before. So they were so excited about getting on a school bus and making the trip from Pep Prentis over here on a school, because they drive the van, they're, they ride in vans over there. They just, even the school bus trip for some of those kids was just like, like a life-changing event for some of them. So, um, if you could have seen it, it was really, if you were here, it was fantastic. Uh, Ryan Kelber announced all, we had a sheet with, with all their names, and when they would score a touchdown, he would say, Devante scores it. And it, and it was just, uh, our band came out and played the fight song, our shooters, they had time where out there, and then several teachers brought their students out from class, uh, that had, had some time. So we always kind of leave that open to them. It was just a great event. And then I got a call Sunday morning from a good friend of mine that saw it on the news, he, who's a referee. He goes, uh, who, uh, who has a daughter who has Down Syndrome. He goes, do you need a referee next year? He goes, I'll wear my stripes and I'll come and I'll referee the game for you. He goes, I, he goes, as a matter of fact,[1673.79] I'll get four other, he goes, we'll have five referees. We'll be like a regular football game. We'll get, we'll bring five officials. And we won't throw any flags. So you don't have to yell at me. So I said, that's good. It's good. So it's, it's kind of morphing itself into this thing that was.
Did they ever post that story on the, on the website?
Not as of yesterday. And Dave, I think somehow was trying to work to, to get it. Somebody had video, somebody had DVR'd it.
I have it, actually.
Okay.
I actually sent it to you. My, my wife actually sent it to me at work. She's like at noon or whatever. She's like, check this out. And like, and there you were, I had an interview and everything. Actually, I'll send it to you right now.
Good. So, and, and, and we'll post it on the website and I'll get it over to Pep Prentis so they can distribute it as well too. But it was, it was great. So.
It's a picture of the TV though. It's okay, but I have.
You really did have one of the best photographers.
He's, it.
He's amazing.
As soon as I watched the video, I, I know he gets recognized every, I didn't put, I didn't put the name with the, the work until I saw the, until I saw it here. And then I realized that he, this is the guy that wins like multiple awards every year for his work.
He's a true artist.
He really is.
He does from, from point, the first second to the last second of that story, he has that programmed just exactly.
He had to have an hour of film that he came up with, what, a 30 or 45 second story with maybe. He had to have an hour. And he was disappointed that it got done so soon because he wanted to take more film. He goes, oh, he was, because he got here for the older kids game. He missed the younger kids. Goes, ah, I wish I, you know, I'm, I'm sorry. It was like, God, that was worth it. The camera never stopped running the whole time he was here. He's really.
And then he does all that and then he goes into edit, to edit it.
Yeah. This is something else. So.
It's amazing.
Matt and I had an outstanding meeting with, with Huntington Bank officials about some of our cyber protections. And, and we actually got, had another phone conference with them today. Our, our coverage with Source is very, very good. And we added unbeknownst to us, I know we just met with Source about a month ago, and we went through our, our policy so quickly. But we added some things to it that actually are kind of, we bumped up our coverage for cyber attacks and, and those types of things. So, but to reiterate what David said, this is, when I was at Bassett and Pat Sicquantella from Aurora and Matt Montgomery from Revere, two highly respected superintendents whose both districts got hacked, told their stories of how they got hacked. It was, it was eye-opening. And I, like I said, I came right back to Matt and said, Matt, we, we got to get somebody in here right now, you know. And, but it's a comfort to know that their, their person says, we are doing everything that they know to do. And when the FBI does a presentation, they wake you up a little bit. But, but it's an ongoing thing. And it's, and it's, and it's going to be a constant, it's going to be something we're probably going to talk about on a monthly or semi-monthly basis, just because as soon as we put some security things in place, they, they've got thousands of people and they work on bypassing and run them and that type of thing. So, but the big one right now is that it's coming online and identifying themselves as a member of the administration or the higher, and get, try to get accounts changed. So. And actually Aurora got hacked for several million and got almost all of it back. Because if you get ahold of the FBI within 48 hours, they can get it back for you, we found out. Which is why a lot of them do it on Fridays, because then by Monday, you have no chance. And Revere's was even more interesting. Revere's did the building project. I'm just going to steal some time here. But, and, and they kept getting requests from the builder, you know, you're due for another like million dollar payment on the building. And which made perfect sense because they were making regular payments. But then they were very persistent about continuing to ask for the payment. So Matt picked up the phone. He knows the construction manager. He goes, why are you guys being so persistent about asking for this payment? He goes, what are you talking about? He goes, we haven't, he goes, I got, I read the email. He goes, Matt, that's not us. We, we have not requested a payment from you. So then they did a little bit of tracing. Thankfully they hadn't sent any money, but they had gotten into the system and they, it was identical to the company's email. And they had the right names and they had the right numbers and they had the right accounts now. And, and they were just fortunate not to have sent any money.
I was nearly a victim of financial fraud this past month. So I can attest to the, to the wisdom of talking about this.
It's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be something that's, just has to be ongoing with us. And thankfully Dave, Dave's up to speed and trying to keep up to speed. And Dave goes to first ring safety meetings. And I'm sure that that's a topic of discussion at those meetings. I know Matt hears a lot about it on the Treasurers end. And in our superintendent's meetings, it's, it's always on the agenda. So when districts like Aurora and Revere that have pretty high level systems, well-respected, long-time treasures in place, Rick Burdine's on Revere, they come after them. It's, it's everybody's fair game. So. And that's my, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to board business resolutions. A motion to approve attendance at professional conferences per the attachment, which would be Mr. Muccio going to the Serb Advanced Negotiation Seminar in Columbus on December 2nd at a cost of $50.
In the amended Chamber of Commerce meeting on November 6th.
Oh.
That probably didn't show back up on yours, but.
Oh, because I didn't refresh. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, I don't have it on my news.
All right. So help me out, because now I just refreshed. And so I'm not even in the meeting. But, so Chamber of Commerce.
Haga Valley, Chamber of Commerce, State of the Valley Seminar.
November 13th.
November 13th.
Okay.
I don't remember the cost. 35? I have no idea.
Twenty, usually 25.
25? Oh, remembers. That's right.
Yeah.
20 or 25, yeah. I just remember seeing the numbers on the sheet. I don't remember which is what.
Okay. So moving on to number 19, board policy adoption. This is the second read. So a motion to adopt the policy 8462, student abuse and neglect is reviewed on October 9th, 2019. Motion to adopt policy 8403, school resource officer is reviewed on October 9th, 2019. Motion to adopt policy 7440.03, small unmanned aircraft systems is reviewed on October 9th, 2019. Motion to adopt policy 8400, school safety is reviewed on October 9th, 2019. And motion to adopt policy 8500, food services is reviewed on October 9th, 2019. At this time, I will take a motion to approve the board business consent agenda motions.
So.
Moved by Mr. Souchacki.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Naaman. Any discussion?
Just one add on, Mr. Dobbins had a very good point. I'm currently crafting three resolutions for each of the villages, thanking them for, for their participation in our, on our safety committee and for the services that they offer us. So then when we go out for the best meetings, I'll have a, we'll get the board to approve those resolutions and we'll, we'll, we'll give those to each of the mayors. And when best visits the council meetings as a, as a thank you for all that they do for us, safety-wise with the roaming patrol, the random patrols and the participation in our safety committee work and so forth and so on. So.
I appreciate you doing that. I think it's really important that we note the significant contributions of the villages do on a, on a regular, ongoing basis. And it kind of, for probably obvious reasons, it kind of flies under the radar. But there are times where we really need to recognize what they're doing for us.
100%.
Thank you.
That's a great idea. Any other discussion? Harry Nun, roll call.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Board discussion, any possible discussions?
I just want to bring up that Debbie Saunders got back to me. So we, the Hall of Fame Committee met and we're currently shooting for January 4th is the day when we dedicate the gym in Flip Saunders' name. Debbie will be in town. Ryan will be in town. He has to get permission from the NBA to be at the high school because they consider that recruiting. I don't, don't know that anybody on our team was, will be being scouted at that point in time. But it's, so we're working on, again, a resolution for that. We're also working on the plaque for the entrance to the gym and some banners in the gym in Flip's name. And I've contacted the Alumni Association saying, once I have this finalized, I'd really like them to advertise it. It's going to be, we're not going to charge admittance to the game that night. And we're going to do it between the JV and the varsity game. And we're going to do what we can to pack the gym. I'll give Greg Saunders a call once I've got the details worked out. And hopefully Greg can come into town. I know Greg's son works in the area here. So I think he, Flip's son, nephew. And then Debbie had said the girls would come in too. His three daughters were wanting to come in too. So I'm, we're trading emails back and forth, inching toward that. But I think we got a date, we got a time. And also we contacted Marissa Conapelli is the current sideline reporter for the Cincinnati Bengals. And as Flip passed away, she did a, a put together for Spectrum Sports, like a half hour show about Flip after he had passed. They never aired it. So we've contacted Marissa with the possibility of maybe her coming up and being an AMC for the event. But if she, if she has the rights to that, to maybe show him, maybe not in its entirety, but she interviewed a lot of people that knew Flip. And it'd be, it'd be a real nice addition to the, to the ceremony. So.
That's awesome.
It's really good.
Thanks for taking the lead on this. We'll do some coffee and cake in the lobby afterwards. And so looking forward to that.
I wonder if they could use that, this dedication of the gym as a reason to air that?
I would hope, we, we had hoped to maybe get some of the Cavs, but the Cavs play back-to-back. So the Cavs are actually playing that night. So Kevin, we would hope to get, because Kevin and Flip were friends. But they're not going to be, and actually Tim Alcorn, who's the new Cavs radio announcer, he and I work Lorraine County football together. So Tim had said he would come and emcee it. But he's going to have to be at the Cavs games. I didn't realize they had back-to-backs. So.
Okay. Next up, board committee reports, comments. You want to go, Joe?
Yeah, I would, first thing, I'd like to thank everybody for my absence last week. I was recovering from surgery. So thank you for filling in for me. Everybody, really, I'm greatly appreciative of that. Secondly, I just, I just, I scheduled the finance committee meeting. So a deadline of noon on Friday, so we can get that out and then get it scheduled for either, I think I, I put some possible dates out there for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. And then I think Monday and Tuesday of the following week. So it basically, it stays away from Halloween and Friday nights. So, so hopefully we can, we can make something work. I, that would be, that would be optimal because we'd like to have some discussion before the, the November 6th board meeting then. So, so whoever needs to still, as part of the committee, needs to, to go on the doodle. I appreciate that before Friday. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Edder.
I just want to say, I thought tonight our Students of the Month were just a great representation of our school. They all had different talents and interests. And I thought that was a great show of just who we are here at Kaihaka Heights. And enjoyed the Senior Citizens Dinner. That was right before our board meeting. And thanks to everybody who helped out with that and engaging with the seniors, sitting with them and talking with them and hearing from them a little bit. So I thought that was really good. And the band sounded fantastic. So, something like that.
Thank you. Mr. Souchacki?
Yeah. As the, as you know, I, I go to the Career Center Agenda meetings. And then they happen to be in the morning. And when we, this, when the meeting's over, I often go to the Career Center and wander the building. So two departments I stopped in had cosmetology that I'd been putting off. I didn't know how, I just felt a little out of place in that room. But.
Did you get your hair cut?
No, but I got the list of services, prices for the fee. So if you are interested.
Don't stand still too long in there. You'll, you'll have, you'll have an apron on, a smock on you and some clippers going. So.
So if you are interested, I have the list of prices for all their services. And then I walked down a hallway, which I, I guess I hadn't noticed the sign before called Transition to Work. And I got to see a whole, Tom's nodding his head. I got to see a whole other angle where people with, I use the word very special needs are, they're trying to prepare them for some level of employment or, or ability to contribute to society. And it was just heartwarming to see the sorts of things that they do. And they do bring in, in work into those areas. Sometimes they take the students out. And sometimes they have the students do work there, building little packages, you know, for like the, for parent night or something. They'd, where they'd have folders and they'd be inserting all the, and what the, and they told me what they, they stress is, everything has to be in the right order, right? You put in this sheet, then you put in that sheet, then you flip, right? And it's very detailed oriented. But it seems to really help these students. And I saw one of the administrators, secretaries come in and spent a few times with one, a few moments with one of the students. It was very, very heartwarming experience. I really wanted to share that one with you. And we've got a chance to see that tomorrow night because they won't be there tomorrow evening. But we were, we are going to be in, okay, which room is it? I don't remember. It's on the invitation. I can't remember which, which area we're going to be. We meet in one of the, in one of the rooms and then at 5:00 and then at 5:30 is the dinner. So.
I'm just off this.
Yeah, I can't remember the neighborhood. That's all right. When you get there, they'll direct you to the right place.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow. I don't have anything tonight, but just to encourage everyone to keep up the good work. A lot of good things going on.
Excellent. All right. I'm up.
Yes.
We, at this time, Mr. Muccio, you got to focus for a second. We want to present you an award for getting an Ohio Auditor of State Award. So we have an award for an award that with your hard work and diligence and just key to your, what do I want to say? Just your.
Attention to detail.
Just, thank you. Attention to detail. We are so glad and thankful to have you as one of our employees at the, at the helm of the Treasure Department. So we have a little award for you. You want to pass it to, you could add to your collection. How many more to come?
I'd just like to say, you know, anything involving the Treasurers Office, you know, cannot be done without Kathy Martin and Yulika Rodriguez. They're two special people. They're great at what they do. And they deserve all the credit for this. They're awesome. But thank you.
And as far as, I will, I will answer, answer your, your doodle email as far as the Finance Committee meeting. And I know we have best coming up, I think, October 30th.
Correct.
A Communication Forums meeting.
Yes.
Set November 6th.
Correct, Monday.
It's all coming off the 3. This is great.
Wow, that's pretty good.
I'm impressed.
Impressive. And just an FYI, I will be a little late to, to the thing tomorrow. I am taking a class through my school district and didn't realize they conflicted. So not that anyone cares, but I might add to the dinner. But I, I will, I want to get there. I'm very excited to see some, some of the things there. And that's all. Yeah. So moving on to possible future agenda items. Do we want to probably put, I'm thinking that spreadsheet, maybe talk a little bit about OSBA. You know what I'm talking about, guys?
Yep.
Sessions?
We'll throw it up on, we'll throw it up on the screen the next meeting.
Okay. Anything else for agenda items? Maybe, do we have the dates or the time that we're going to be meeting down at Columbus?
Yes. It's, it's going to be 8:00 Monday evening.
Oh, okay.
I'll resend that out to the board. It's at the Gordon.
Yeah, I got that. But do we have to, we have to note it publicly?
Yeah.
You just, I mean, as long as.
He's going to.
You're on.
Matt's going to post that.
Okay.
Okay.
You're on top of it. Okay. Anything else? Future agenda items?
Just so the board knows, I keep forwarding the invitations that are coming. I just, I'm just forwarding everything to you folks. So that's, if you want RSVP, if you want, there was, I think, one or two that came through in the last couple of days. I'm just shooting those out to you. Feel free to, I know Mr. Souchacki always likes to go down to the art museum. I don't remember who sponsors that.
Except that's Monday night.
Is it?
So, I think it starts at 6:00. So I may run down.
There will be a lot of, oh, and Bob Summers, I'm, I'm, thank you, Mrs. Schukert. I almost forgot about this. Bob Summers came up and met with me. Bob's former state staff member, former school board member, longtime school board member. Was former state ag supervisor. So I know Bob since my early days as a teacher. But Bob works with Boards of Education on professional development. And, and my approach with Bob, when I met Bob at, down at Bassett was I, we've got a good board. And just like the school, we like to want to go to a great board. And, you know, and we've come out of this whole recovery thing. And we really, we really have a lot of positive things going. And it's about taking that positive momentum and, and working with the board on maybe some specific goals for the board. I know Jim Zwissler did a lot of work with you folks on our evaluations. This is more targeted on your board professional development. So if, when you get down to OSBA, I would ask that you stop by and see Bob. They'll, they'll be at the trade show. And I'm going to hold off on anything I said, Bob, because he gave me a proposal. I said, Bob, I'm not even going to talk to the board about the proposal until they can come and meet with you at OSBA. So I said, be looking for my board members. And I, he has all your names and, and he looked at the website. So if you get the opportunity, please stop and see Bob and talk to him for a little bit. And then when we come back, we'll have a discussion about if that's a direction we want to go. If not, that's fine too.
Bob Summers?
Bob Summers. S-O-M-M-E-R-S.
Okay.
And then, quite honestly, Bob was, when they, when they named Paulo de Maria the Superintendent of Instruction, Bob's was the other name that was being bandied around. So that, that was where, that's the level. And I know Bob is an ag supervisor. And we were talking about the 70s and 80s. And we had 10 ag supervisors in the state of Ohio. And, you know, that was actually who evaluated me as a teacher. My state supervisor did. I didn't give an evaluation from my local principal. My, the state supervisor came to my school district twice a year and evaluated my teaching and my lab procedures. So that's how much it's changed through the years. So I guess that just says I'm really old. As I, as I said that, Lindy's laughing over there. Yeah, I think that's just really how stinking old I am. But.
I'm going to stay out of those conversations.
I'll stop there. I'll stop there.
All right. So it should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agenda several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they had considerable opportunity to study it and ask questions. Upcoming meetings, November 6th, November 20th, and December 11th, all 2019, right here. Wednesdays at 7:00 PM. At this point, I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G1 for the purpose of considering the employment and or compensation of employees of the school district.
Yes. Second. Did you see?
Oh, I made the motion. Yeah. I made the motion. Okay. Seconded by Mr. Souchacki. Any discussion? Harry Nun, roll call.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.[1795.83]